The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Coulter,
Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman,
Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Cruzen, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Rhodey, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Cone, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter. Twenty-one present.
I quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Elder Edmund Low Senior, the Presiding Elder of the St. Louis Cape Girardeau District of Missouri Conference of AME Church.
Good morning. To President Reed, God bless you and thank you for the opportunity and time. Let us pray. Our Father bless we, the leaders of this assembly. Strengthen the courage of the wonderful public servants thusly assembled, sincere men and women who want to do what is right, what is fitting, and what is proper. Make it plain to them, O God, to do what is right and that ye require that we all do justly, that we love mercy, that we walk humbly with God and with each other. O God of power, might, wisdom, and justice, only through you authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist these wonderful men and women with your spirit. Give them wise counsel and fortitude to do and be exemplars of true public service. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Grant them the sincere desire to look after our city with keen eyes that are watchful, that are prayerful, and sincere hearts that care. Give them a strong sincere resolve to hold true the oaths that they took when the people of the city entrusted them with their votes and support. Help them to lead our city with honesty and integrity. Give them the courage to work on behalf of the least, the lost, and the marginalized of our city, not just the great and the proud. God do not allow them to have stubborn ambitions and place in their hearts a series of love. Do not allow injustice to creep into their being. Let no personal ambition blind them to the opportunities and possibilities that all of the people of this city need to be and deserve to be properly represented. Help them to give battle to hypocrisy wherever they may find it. Let them not be stubborn in their resolve to serve the people. Give them divine common sense and selflessness that make them think of true public service and not of public gain. May they have the courage to lead the people of this city with the creed that says, "Let the well-being of the people be the supreme law." And finally, God, save them from the folly of man-made schemes and plans, but in part, your divine spirit, to lead, to guide, and to direct them. We ask these things now in the wonderful and matchless name of Jesus. Amen.
Let's give the Reverend a round of applause. That was a great, great prayer. We dispense with our regular order of business. Take about Curtesy Resolution Calendar. I move for adoption our Curtesy Resolution Calendar. I entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the eighteenth. Alderman from the fourth, would you like to approach the dais?
All those that are with Reverend Low. I'd like to say I have the privilege of presenting this honorarium to Elder Low. There are many pastors and preachers that come down to pray on our behalf, but you gave such a powerful message, a mini sermon. It sounds like me when I'm preaching to my colleagues. If everyone is paying attention. I'd like to, Clerk, if you would. Ms. Donna, I do not have my glasses and I'm gonna put you on the spot to read this for me. We thank you.
Elder Edmund Low Senior. Whereas we pause to express our sense of appreciation and congratulations to Elder Edmund Low Senior for his many contributions to St. Louis and Jefferson County regions. And whereas, a native of St. Louis, Edmund was born on October the fifteenth, 1957, the seventh and last child of Felton and Reverend Nelson Low. He graduated from University High School where he excelled as an all-conference scholar, athlete, and football and track, and once held indoor state and school records in the shot put and discus. Whereas Edmund attended Southeast Missouri State University in Cape Girardeau where he was a college All-American in discus. He later transferred to St. Louis University and graduated with dual degrees in business and communications. He went on to earn a master's degree in human resource development at Webster University as well as completing additional studies in theology from Eden Theological and Concordia Seminaries. Whereas Edmund is married to Reverend Regina Low and is the father of two sons, Edmund Junior and Justin, and he enjoys the company of his granddaughter, Jillian Micah Marie. And whereas Edmund Low Senior retired from AT&amp;T after thirty-one years of service, during that time he served multiple states, including California, Texas, Arkansas, Kansas, and Missouri. And he also worked in Mexico and was named a certified corporate trainer during his visit to South Africa where he was honored to meet the father of South Africa, Nelson Mandela. And whereas Reverend Edmund Low Senior was appointed Presiding Elder of the St. Louis Cape Girardeau District of Missouri Conference of the AME Church during its one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth annual conference. Elder Low was the founding pastor of Christ Our Redeemer AME Church where he served over twenty years. And during that time, the church grew from twelve members to over four hundred with twenty-one active ministries. And in October two thousand and twelve, he was assigned to the St. James AME Church, St. Louis, as its thirty-fifth pastor. Whereas Elder Low has worked tirelessly in Jefferson County, providing spiritual guidance and support as well as facilitating a place of worship for a newly established church, Trinity Mount Carmel Church of Jefferson County. And whereas Elder Low's passion and teaching, is teaching, he pursues it as often as possible in small and large settings, a reflection of his favorite scripture from Psalms thirty-fourth chapter, one through three. "I will bless the Lord at all times; his praise shall continually be in my mouth. My soul makes its boast in the Lord; the humble hear and be glad. Oh, magnify the Lord with me, and let us exalt his name together." Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize, acknowledge, and thank Elder Edmund Low Senior for the many contributions he's made throughout his life to educate, embrace, and spread the word of God through the St. Louis community. We further direct the Clerk of this Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to prepare a memorable, a memorial copy to the end that it may be presented to our honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. Introduced on the eighth day of January two thousand and sixteen by the Honorable Samuel Moore, Alderman of the Fourth Ward, Honorable Lewis E. Reed, President of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen.
Thank you. Thank you. Reverend Low, it is my pleasure to present this honorarium to you and you are truly a beacon of light in this dark wilderness. And we totally appreciate you and I'm gonna have the President of the Board will explain the significance of this resolution. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna bring Donna up so that she can talk real quick about it. You know, Donna is our Clerk and... But Donna has other life outside of the Board of Aldermen. A big life outside of Board of Aldermen, believe it or not. But she is very active in AME Church and I think you're a pastor, a minister. She's a pastor herself. So that's why in the morning, before we start the meeting, I always say, "Are we ready, Pastor?" That's what that's about. Go ahead, Donna.
Thank you, President Reed, and to all of you Aldermen and to pastors and ministers. Thank you so much for coming. I want to give praise, first of all, to God who is Lord of my life and he is the reason that we're all here and I give him reverence and praise. Thank you to all the ministers and pastors that came to Elder Edmund Low. He has been so instrumental in helping me and my congregation in Jefferson County. We are a new church. We are one year and a half years old. So we're babies, but we have great big feet, the big, big shoes that we're following. And Elder Low is one of our mentors and he leads us and he supports us. I just talked to him last night, or two nights ago, and he was giving me inspiration and encouragement on how to grow our fellowship. And so I just want you to know that he is a wonderful, wonderful person that blesses not only St. Louis but Jefferson County.
God bless you.
The ministers and pastors here. Did you want me to?
Oh, yes, my lead pastor's here.
The lead, I'll have you introduce all of the pastors because I don't know them all, but I just wanted to thank you, Elder Low, for thinking about the little people, for kindly giving of yourself. He's a great big man, but he's helping the little people. And I just want to tell you, thank you so very much. And we have big shoes to follow, but we're gonna go ahead and forge forward and try to help the community of Jefferson County as well as St. Louis. God bless you.
Oh, yeah. Elder Low, I tell you, I am so honored to share this dais with you today as with all of the other past ministers that are here today. This resolution is the highest honor this Board has to give any organization or individual. And it's an official act of the Board and we have to pass it and adopt it here on the floor of the Board and that's what we're doing today. What it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions on behalf of people up until this point. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when you research the records of the City of St. Louis, your name, Elder Edmund Low, will be amongst those records and people will know that you contributed so much so that we pause in our deliberations today to recognize you. Congratulations and thank you for everything that you've done on behalf of enriching people's lives all across the city, across the state, and across the region. So I cannot thank you enough. Let's give him a big round of applause. We're also gonna ask something a little bit different than what we've done on these resolutions in the past. I'm gonna ask the Sergeant of Arms to commit this document also to Wikipedia. So we'll make sure to get the Sergeant of Arms to make sure that it's online under Edmund Low so that when you search through Google, you'll be able to come back through to pick up the document also. So we're gonna ask that the Sergeant of Arms does that.
Thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
I'd like to make a motion that we do this in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we do in bank, second by Alderman from the ninth, then the other one from the thirteenth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Again, as the Alderman just stated to you, what that meant, and it's a rare occasion, that one hundred percent, every Alderman on the floor, every Alderman here now wants their name added to your resolution. So another resolution, Sergeant of Arms, would he create another resolution and get it to us prior to Reverend Low leaving? You wanna? We're gonna ask Alderman Moore just to give us one bar of "Order My Steps."
"Order My Steps." I'm not gonna sing. I'm gonna have Reverend Low to speak and I'll sing for you next week, especially to you, Jeff.
Good morning and I am grateful. I'm honored. I thought my trip here would be prayer and not nearly any of the things that have happened. I'm totally surprised. But I'm grateful to give whatever bit of service that I have to God and to God's people. Today, there's wonderful people that are with me. Reverend Debbie Thornton, she's the pastor of Painesville, Missouri, Bethel-Painesville. The lead pastor of the Missouri Annual Conference of thirty churches, the Reverend Spencer Booker, pastor of St. Paul Church, the oldest African-American church west of the Mississippi, the founding church that's the oldest church in the City of St. Louis in the African Methodist Episcopal faith that started all the westward expansion of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, the Reverend Spencer Booker. Pastor Martinez Walls, he's pastor in Bearden Chapel, Herkylania, Missouri, also in Jefferson County. The Reverend James Bowler, who's the pastor of St. Charles, St. John, St. Charles, Missouri, and his wonderful wife, the Reverend Amelia Bowler. So we're grateful for that. Reverend Zeldrick Preston, pastor of Allen Chapel, Hannibal, Missouri. So as you can see, the footprint of the church is huge and we have great impact throughout the entire city. I am grateful, I am humbled, and I am totally, totally surprised. Now, I'm smart enough to know that most good things people say about you, you have to work really hard to either attain it or maintain it. I'm not sure which is which. So God bless you and thank you. I am deeply, deeply honored and thankful. All I ever want to do is to serve God and serve God's people. That's all I want. God bless you.
Just thirty seconds. President Reed, Alderman Moore, and to this august body of leaders, on behalf of the African Methodist Episcopal Church, the St. Louis District, Reverend Smith and her pastors, and the pastors of the St. Louis Cape Girardeau District, we thank you for honoring Elder Edmund Low, who's a senior pastor and a senior citizen of this City of St. Louis. Indeed, he's a wonderful giant of a man. He's a gentle giant and indeed, the resolution is well-deserved and just I pause to say thank you for saluting Presiding Elder Edmund Low.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our Curtesy Resolution Calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. But that will return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guests. Any introduction of our guests. All in favor from the fourteenth.
Good morning, President Reed. I'd like to have as my honored guest, Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local Seventy-three, David Rudolph from St. Louis Police Officers Association, and Gary Otten from Painters District Council Number Two.
Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Martina Johnson from the St. Louis Association of Realtors. Thank you.
Alderman from the third.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my special guest today, Lakeisha Frazier Bosley.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Members of the Board, I'd like to have my special guest from the plumbers and pipe fitters and they just did their first names, Fred, Mike, and Dick, and they said, to also say it's the best union in the city, I don't know. And from fire, Percy Green, which is somewhere over here.
Alderman from twenty-seven.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest a former comptroller and former twenty-seventh ward, Alderman Vervis Jones, and Leonard Johnson from Tishara's office. I mean, the treasurer's office, I'm sorry. Thanks.
All in favor from the twentieth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have today as my honored guest, Irene Augustin, Tony Hilton, and Eddie Roth of the PIT Committee. They'll be counting folks experiencing homelessness this winter.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have from the License Collector Office, Jerome, from the Prosecutor's Office, Ms. Rachel Smith, and my very special guest today is Mr. Jeffrey Boyd.
All in favor from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my special guest today, Anthony Alancia with AGC, and my intern, Nick Kimball, who'll be heading back to Loyola next week. Thank you.
We also have with us today Steve Roberts Junior. Please stand up, Steve. Thank you for joining us today. Let's get him down. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Mr. Leroy Grant, representing AT&amp;T, who's trying to lower their phone bills on your behalf, and also Mary One Johnson with Mary One Realty.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Welcome back, everybody. We have a very busy session ahead of us. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap us up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. Once again, can we start the new year by reminding all of them to leave my microphone alone? Thank you. As we're gathered here on January eighth, it was on this day in eighteen fifteen the Battle of New Orleans actually took place. It was on this day in nineteen seventy-three that the Watergate Trials began. But most importantly, today is National Bubble Bath Day. So when you all go home this evening, fill your tub up with bubbles, grab your rubber ducky, and have a little fun. And dearly most important, today is Elvis Presley's birthday. But before I say thank you, I'd like to introduce my special guest, Ward Cleaver, who's sitting in the desk at the Alderman of the twenty-first today. Ward, stand up and take a bow.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move for the approval of the December eleventh, fifteenth, and eighteenth minutes.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be...
Hold on for a second. Could the marshals please remove the people from the galleries that are disrupting the meeting? Please proceed, Alderman. Please proceed.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
All right, report of city... We would dispense with line items seven and eight. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items nine and ten. First reading of board bills?
Board Bill Two-five-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-five oh-four McKean and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-seven, sponsored by Alderwoman Green and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-six, ten through twelve Bamberger and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-eight, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-four oh-one through oh-five South Ninth Street and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-five-nine, sponsored by Alderman Coulter and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-three forty-five Russell and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-sixty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate public surface rights for travel in an irregular portion of Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill Two-six-one, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on wise between Kings Highway and Brother Thornton Way abutting forty-nine forty-six and forty-nine forty-seven wise. Board Bill Two-six-two, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for an irregular portion of Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill Two-six-three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service vacating a portion of air rights for a fifteen-foot section of Taylor south of Children's Place. Board Bill Two-six-four, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on a five-by-ten-foot section of sidewalk walk on Children's Place west of Taylor. Board Bill Two-six-five, sponsored by Alderman Conway, Alderman and Alderwoman Spencer Flowers Hubbard, Coulter, Valmer, Villa, Arnowitz, Murphy, Howard, Green, Behringer, French, Boyd, Vacaro, Ogilvy, Cone, Williamson, Carter, and Cruzen, and ordinance submitting to the qualified voters the question whether to continue the earnings tax imposed by the City for a period of five years, providing for an election and the manner of voting thereat, providing that if such questions shall receive the votes of a majority of the voters voting thereon, that such earnings tax shall continue and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-six-six, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment Amending and Supplementing Ordinance Six-nine-eight-nine-three, which among other things establishes a green community program which among other things establishes a green community program for the purpose of making low-interest loans for residential energy efficiency projects and building, and public building energy conservation projects, and to authorize the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to sell one or more series of energy conservation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Six-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, and an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its Cornerhand Courthouse leasehold revenue refunding bond series two thousand and sixteen A in aggregate principal amount not to exceed twenty-one million dollars in order to refund all or a portion of its outstanding Cornerhand Courthouse leasehold revenue refunding bond series two thousand and six A issued by the corporation in an original aggregate principal amount of not to exceed, amount of twenty-three million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, the proceeds of which were used for the construction, renovation, equipping, and installation of furnishings and equipment for the Cornerhand Courthouse, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Six-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderman Villa, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors at a special bond election to be held in said city on the fifth day of April two thousand and sixteen of a proposal for the incurring of indebtedness and the issuance of bonds of, of said city in evidence thereof in an aggregate amount not to exceed twenty-five million dollars upon the assent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Six-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance authorizing directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a quick claim deed to Myrtle Hilliard Davis Comprehensive Health Centers Incorporated for certain city-owned property located in City Block Thirty-Six Seventy-Seven, which property is described in Exhibit A, up on receipt of and in consideration the sum of one dollar, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Seventy, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, and ordinance pertaining to parking within the Gerhardt Los Building Residential Parking District, including residents of Thirty-Nine Hundred through Thirty-Nine Fourteen, Le Cleed, and containing definitions, a penalty clause, and a severability clause. Board Bill Two-SeventeOne, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, and ordinance pertaining to parking within Buckingham Court Residential Parking District, revising Ordinance Six-Six Three Eight Six, authorizing the public, authorizing the traffic and transportation administrator to designate the location and restrictions for curb parking of residential parking zones within the east side of North King's Highway, between the intersection of King's Highway and Le Cleed. Board Bill Two-SeventeTwo, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Forty-two Fourteen, Shoto, Forty-one Thirty-One, and Forty-one Forty-One, Manchester, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-SeventeThree, sponsored by Alderman Green, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Thirty-eight, for Thirty-seven oh-eight Humphrey, and containing a severability clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference to committee.
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills Two-Six-Six, Two-Six-Seven, and Two-Six-Nine. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills Two-Five-Six, Two-Five-Seventh, Two-Five-Nine, Two-SeventeTwo, and Two-SeventeThree. To the Housing Committee, Board Bill Two-Five-Eight. To the Streets Committee, Board Bills Two-Sixty, Two-Sixty-One, Two-Sixty-Two, Two-Sixty-Three, Two-Sixty-Four, Two-Seventy, and Two-Seventy-One. That's the extent of reference to committees.
Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bills Number Two-Sixty-Eight and Two-Sixty-Five to Ways and Means.
So noted.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of the Housing Committee. Board Bill Two-Six-Six, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-six Twenty-Six through Forty-six Seventy, Forty-six Twenty-Five through Forty-six Thirty-One, and Forty-six Forty-Seven through Forty-six Sixty-Three, St. Ferdinand. Board Bill Two-Thirty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Hubbard, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property in City Block Sixty-four Eighty-Four, Sixty-five Eighty-Five from D Multiple Family Dwelling District to G Local Commercial and Office at Fourteen Twenty, North Twenty-Fourth Street, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Thirty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Cruzen, and ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for Fifty-three Oh-One through Thirteen Pershing, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Forty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-one Fifty Shenandoah. Board Bill Two-Fifty, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from B Two Family Dwelling District and F Neighborhood Commercial District to the F Neighborhood Commercial District in City Block Sixteen Thirty-Nine for property at Twenty-seven Forty-eight through Fifty-four Chippewa, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two-Five-One, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance designating a portion of the city as a redevelopment area known as Six Thirty-Four North Grand Tiff Redevelopment Area pursuant to the Real Property Tax Increment Allocation Redevelopment Act, adopting and approving a redevelopment plan and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Five-Two, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance affirming adoption of a redevelopment plan, redevelopment area, redevelopment project, authorized execution of redevelopment agreement between the city and TLG Six Thirty-Four North Grand LLC, and containing a severability clause. Board Bill Two-Five-Five, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Davis, and ordinance approving amendment to the Grand Center Tiff Redevelopment Plan, approved removing certain property from the redevelopment area and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of second readings.
Before we move on to the perfection consent calendar, I'm gonna ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries to please stand and join me for a moment of silence, uh, for the passing of Tyler Bosley, person, the sister of, uh, our friend and colleague Freeman Bosley, Junior, Senior. Alderman Bosley, our thoughts and prayers would be with you and your family in this moment of grief and loss. Um, if there's anything that myself and other members of this body can do to help you through this period, please let us know, but understand that we stand with you. All aldermen from the first.
Who of Alderman Bosley, which I am no substitute for, but I did know his sister very well, Tyler, uh, Bosley, which I'd like to call her, but I know she had other names that followed that, but, uh, Bosley is the important one here, uh, was a great person. She worked for the city for a number of years. Uh, if you ever met her, their family is known for their singing abilities. I mean, from June to Tyler to, even Alderman here has can carry a tune. And, uh, she will be sorely missed by the Bosley family and members of the city of St. Louis, and, uh, I'm sorry to hear her passing.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. I know I've had, I had opportunity to work on the campaign trail with her many a times. She is, she was dynamo, so we definitely will miss her. And understand, again, um, we all stand with you, and, uh, uh, anything we can do to help you through this period, we're there for you. Alright, thanks, brother. We would dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent calendar.
Board Bill One Twenty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Moore, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to establish the, the direction of Cottage Avenue as a one-way street eastbound from Cora to North Taylor. Board Bill One Ninety-One, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance directing the Director of Streets to temporarily close barricade or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on Arlington at Clemens, three hundred feet north of Enright, and the northeast corner of Arlington to the northwest corner of Arlington, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill Two Forty-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Tyus, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate the five thousand through fifty-four hundred blocks of Shreve between Bercher and West Florissant as the Reverend Donald Hunter Lane. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth. Second by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We would dispense with line items sixteen and seventeen and eighteen. And nineteen. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution One Six Five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, pursuant to Ordinance Six Seven Seven Nine Four, the Public Safety Committee hereby approves the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee for the appropriation of crime prevention program funds for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on first reading of resolution number one sixty-five.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that this, uh, resolution be referred to the Public Safety Committee.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth. Second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution One Sixty-Five to Public Safety.
So noted. Resolution One Six Six, sponsored by Alderman Coulter, the Board of Alderman approves the Sularc Special Business District Budget.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on first reading of resolution one six six.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I request unanimous, unanimous consent for resolution one sixty-six.
Hearing no objection. Please proceed, Alderman.
Uh, this is simply the budget for the Sularc Special Business District, uh, which is a property tax limit in our neighborhood, um, and by ordinance, we've got to pass a budget every year. Uh, it's very much in line with last year's budget, and, uh, I would ask for your support so we can keep Sularc safe. Thank you.
Alright, you all, need, need to-
I move to, uh, to pass resolution one sixty-six.
Move by Alderman from the seventh. Second by Alderman from the ninth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
Resolution One Five Five, sponsored by Alderman Flowers, Enterprise Zone for American Trailer and Storage.
All aldermen from the second, you recognize on the second reading of resolution one five five.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for final passage of resolution one fifty-five.
Move by Alderman from the second. Second by Alderman from the twenty-second. Any discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number one five five. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolution.
Miss Lane, there's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January the eleventh, Public Safety Committee meeting at ten AM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, January the thirteenth, Ways and Means Committee meeting at nine AM. I'm not sure of the location. I assume it may be in the leisure room. Friday, full board meeting, ten AM in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighth.
Happy New Year, Mr. President and members of the board. Could you add, uh, Madam Clerk, to, uh, Board Bill Number Two-Sixty-Five, President Reed's name as a sponsor, and Alderman Ortman? Two-Sixty-Five is, is the board bill, um, to preserve, um, the earnings tax and the impact that it has on our city budget. So if you'd like your name added to it because we couldn't get hold of you, uh, please let Donna know. This is an important bill, and I'll be looking towards all of you, my colleagues, to make sure you bring the message before April sixth, um, about the significance of the earnings tax on our city budget. Also, I will point out the Ways and Means, we normally meet on Tuesday, but next week, the Ways and Means meeting will be on Wednesday at nine AM. Thank you.
Any further, all aldermen from the twentieth.
Mr. President, um, as we all know, homelessness is a huge issue in the city. Uh, the city of St. Louis takes on the burden of most of the majority of the region's homelessness. And in order for us to get funding, uh, through HUD, we have to do a point-in-time count. And so, uh, that, uh, we've got Irene Augustine and Tony Hilliker and Eddie Roth here to talk to us about how the Alderman can maybe get involved in making sure that we have a very accurate point-in-time count of folks experiencing homelessness, and they're gonna be staying afterwards. Uh, if you all just have a couple minutes to see how, uh, we could all help them achieve that, it would be very helpful.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just need to make sure I do a shout-out. And this shout-out goes to all those city employees, because on Tuesday, when we had the flooding, and we were down on River de Pere, those city employees were the nicest, not only were the volunteers, because I had people from Normandy, Washington, Missouri, we had people from everywhere helping out. And that's the stuff that doesn't make the news. And so as I was leaving, and don't, he had no idea I was an Alderman, as I'm leaving the parking lot, this city employee came up to me and shook my hand and said, "Thank you so much for helping out for the city of St. Louis today." So for all those great city employees, and there are lots of them, I wanna say thank you.
Alderman from the twenty-second.
Mr. President, members of the board, I just want to announce some celebrity birthdays. On January the second, we have Aldermen's Ornowitz and Williamson celebrate birthdays. Round of applause for them. Alright, thank you. And on January the thirteenth, we have Alderman Valmer, who'll be celebrating his seventy-fifth birthday.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? But in that light, I also need to, uh, be remiss if I didn't, my wife's birthday was yesterday, January seventh. Let's give her a round of applause. Thank you. Putting up with me for all the years. She's put up with me. I know that's, that's a lot of work. Alderman from the tenth.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce my baby brother Jeffrey's birthday, my twin brother, January thirteenth. Mom always liked him best. Absolutely.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? All aldermen from the sixteenth.
Ash, sorry. I have to make sure I say this. Today is my mother Geraldine Rose Cunningham's birthday. She is eighty-three years old.
Oh, awesome. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to excuse the Alderman from the fifth, nineteenth, and twenty-six for necessary absence.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, January fifteenth, ten AM.
Move by Alderman from the eighteenth. Second by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Stand adjourned.